We're gonna just do second read on that. And the same for 51, second read on that. Any further questions on those two? Alright, excellent. Going on to 52. This is the purchase of the automated mower. Mr. Wilson, you wanna talk about this?
Yeah, I can start out at least.
Okay.
It's a one regular gas-powered Kawasaki engine, zero-turn, hydraulic, zero-turn, 60-inch cut that can act like a regular zero-turn mower, but also is autonomous. It runs off GPS and it can mow, I think, up to two acres an hour, completely on time without a rider. And I think it has a range of 500 feet. And so the operator can be weed-eating, picking trash, mowing on another mower, you know, mulching, whatever. Whatever the case is, it allows basically to save manpower, doubles manpower. You can mow large fields, it memorizes an area. And then it basically always puts that area in the cloud. And you can pull into that area, you click on it, find that you're in field one. And it just always mows that field the same way. You can't set like different patterns in it and things like that. You can add additional mowers to it and they all communicate. You could have three or four mowers in one field and they can all work together, not like overlapping each other, but all coordinating and mowing the same patterns and that kind of thing. It's pretty crazy stuff, but...
Can you sum that into 1479 moves?
Anything you want.
For 65.
Oh my God. What's next?
So what's the cost of a traditional mower this size?
Um, I would say between 20 to 25,000, somewhere in there. Depending on brand and what you're, you know, what you want. Maybe a little more, maybe a little less, but um...
So it's nearly three times the cost of a traditional mower. But are we set for traditional mowers?
Yeah, I mean, you know...
Is our fleet updated to where you want it to be?
Yeah, if you look at it, you know, you figure, well, you're still gaining a mower.
Right.
So we're still, it's like buying a mower on steroids.
It's like buying a mower and hiring another person.
And hiring another person for extra $40, you know. Obviously helps hard to find, good help is hard to find, that kind of thing, so...
But you still have to have a human there watching it.
No, you don't.
Do you feel comfortable with a lawnmower 16 inches wide driving around without a human?
No, we, when we talked about this in this past, just to be clear, we had the pleasure of joining Mr. Wilson at the Service Directors Association meeting where they were highlighting these mowers and showing how they worked. So I'll answer a question before it comes up. If someone walks in front of it or a ball bounces in front of it, the mower stops. If it hits something, it stops, it shuts down. The thing that we talked about is if we put a person out that mower, like he said, they're gonna go weed-eat. So like, take the front of the park as an example where they'll set that to go and they can set it in different paths. So like, if you wanna cut it on an angle this way the first time, you could do this way the second time. All you have to do is run it one time. So we're having trouble getting people to do this work. We don't have enough people to cut grass right now. We can't get enough seasonals in here. And the problem that we talked about in our staff meeting yesterday, we have three department heads that have all these things that need to be done with skilled work. Cutting grass is not skilled work. We really are trying to find a way to cut down on these other tasks that we have to do. And this is one way that we're proposing to you guys to say, we think this will help us a lot. Because we already sub out City Hall. I mean, we can't even, we can't even get City Hall done. We have to ask them to do City Hall. We subbed out part of the recreation center. We don't have enough people to cut grass.
I did a quick calculation there. At eight hours a day, 20 bucks an hour. Now, we were having somebody cut grass last year, making almost double that. But just $20 an hour, eight hours a day, five days a week, for four months, $16,000 cost to the city.
So you have no one riding it? Do you have someone watching it?
Yeah, what we would do...
I mean, you're still paying somebody, they're just not on it.
But they stop the weed-eating trim. So if you take like the ditch line as an example, they can set the mower to go, they can go weed-eat the ditch line and still have a view of the mower, because they have to use their phone to get it going. Now, I'm sure there's people that don't watch it, but we're not gonna do that. That's not our intent. I think people need to be keeping an eye on it, because I think the technology's good. They wouldn't put it out if it wasn't, so that's why we wanna try it. But they're gonna keep an eye, there's still other things that have to be done.
But be on another mower. And we basically mowed twice what you normally would.
But we wanna try it to see if it works. And like he said, in the future, if this thing works out, there's so many parts, even the ball fields, Mr. Chanick, when we went there, you could set it up for each ball field. You could put ball field A, B, C, and D, and set it to go while that guy is preparing the field. So when he's setting the field up for the play for that day, they could be cutting the grass.
And do you have insurance if it goes wacko?
Yeah, we called the insurance on it already.
Only because I don't care if one of you have an electric car. So many things have been going astray with self-driving cars. That's what's being done for self-driving.
But if someone, no, it's a gas power. When they can go out there and someone's in the field, I'm sure we would ask them to please vacate the area while the lawn's being cut. We would say, hey, we need this area for this time. But it cuts pretty, it's pretty impressive. I think we're gonna show the video, aren't we?
Yeah, ask Kyle to...
We're gonna, I'll show it on the floor.
There's like a five-minute video, I asked him to just show it.
It's impressive.
While we talk about it, that way it's just kinda going in the background. But it is a good video. I think Jason...
The mayor kinda touched on it. Today was the prime example. We were short-staffed out in the fields today. And we actually couldn't even get all of the stuff done that we needed to for doing. So literally, Kuzma can be prepping the infield and lining the infield while the lawnmower is actually mowing the outfield. And sometimes the lining is a two-person job. So it affords us the ability to actually get two things done at once.
And if you think of that context, like the ball fields, it's fenced in. So no one's really gonna be in there, but they could ask them to vacate the area too. And again, they could set that up for each area.
We, when you do the north fields, there's never anyone over there until there's a game, until they've had the mowing done, so...
And if we're mowing fields, they actually do ask people to do so.
So the first time they're setting up the mowing area?
They're showing that the first cut you do by hand and then it sets that to what you want to do for the future. And it also shows on here like if there's something in the way like a flower bed or a water structure, it would go around that and you train it to do that. And here he's put up the second one. So they had four going, but we watched it, it was pretty neat.
Does it have a bag on it? Because these look like they're just...
They're mulching mowers.
Throwing the grass, right?
You're not gonna have baggers.
Which is not healthy.
Well, the good thing is that when you, when you don't bag, one, it's better for the lawn, but two, the more you're able to mow the lawn, the less need you have for a bagger.
Right.
So if they're able to mow it, yeah, if they're able to mow it on a schedule, they don't need a bag.
And the mulch helps, like you said.
Yeah, the mulch feeds the grass.
Yeah.
And our Longwood Park is over 300 acres. I think it's the largest in some counties. So this kinda plays into what we need to get done in terms of beautifying the park and getting the grass cut and helping with that process.
Well, let's leave this on one read for this week. I know you guys are probably itching to get on this, but I want council to do some more of their own research, read some reviews, learn more about autonomous mowers. And we'll be back in two weeks, two or three weeks to vote on this again. So let's leave this at one for now. And we'll watch this video during the meeting, get residents a little more familiar with it. And we'll come back next time and go on second read. Any further questions before we move on? Alright, thank you. Ordinance number 53, a moratorium on permits for car washes.
So I had read an article about, I believe the city of Stowe, that put a moratorium on car washes. And I believe that they have, what, seven in their, in their town? I think we have four or five in a 10-square-mile town. I think we need to take a long, hard look at it, because in that article it talked about how they're becoming more prevalent. A lot of these corporate entities, I mean, they're cash cows apparently, so they wanna keep putting them in everywhere. I feel that we have enough of them at this point and we need to have a greater conversation with you guys to determine, do we want more car washes? Do we wanna regulate it? Do we wanna adjust the code? What do we wanna do for the future? Because you guys all see the same things I do, the social media people. Every time a car wash or a mattress shop, something comes in, we never hear the end of it. So I think we need to take a look at it. I was gonna send you guys the article today, but I got tied up and you had sent me one as well. But basically, I want us to take a look at it to see if something can be done in the future, if we wanna regulate it, if we don't, we wanna leave it alone. It's up to you guys to determine that, but I want us to at least talk about it.
Is there one pending now?
There's one being built.
One being built, but that one, that one would be able to go with...
I questioned that when that, when that went down. I was here for the planning committee meeting.
That's number four.
Yeah.
Four?
I questioned that at that.
There's three in our...
Getco laser wash.
There's one in... The one in 271, bad location. This one, bad location, because I was against it from when it came to us. Yeah, I fully agree. We've got enough.
And what, what we're hearing is there's more coming.
The public says it to us all the time. And they wanna know, can we get any more chicken? Any more Subway sandwiches, deli?
Careful what you ask for.
And the number one, which has been since I've been a kid, is mattress.
Well, and truth be told, I did talk with Mark about that and he's researching it now to maybe look at that as well to say, do we need seven mattress shops? Do we need six tire shops? I mean, is that something we could talk about? I'm all about America and doing what you want with your property, but at some point, you know, when people ask us enough times that live here saying it's enough, I think that's time for us to have a conversation. And I hear it enough, I know you guys hear it. Are we at that point of having more conversations? So he's gonna determine what the other ones. But I'm asking you today to consider a moratorium on car washes now.
Would you be open to, and I'm not, I don't, I don't want my questions to imply that I'm in favor of this, because I lean opposed to this, just as a knee-jerk reaction. But would you be open to it being potentially something broader than that? And I think you are, based on what you just said. Because I read an article that Parma Heights had one of these and it expired. And they're currently looking at what they're now calling a saturation ordinance. And it's not just about one type of business. It's, like you said, multiple businesses. And it's based on concepts like proximity to each other. So you can't have two of them half a mile from each other. And it's based on population density, so...
I think it opens up conversations for a lot of things.
Right.
Maybe this is the start to it, but I want us to talk.
And I'd like to eventually hear the law department's opinion on if we can, if we're even allowed to do this. Right.
The moratorium, we are allowed. He did research this for the car wash piece. But if we wanna open up the other things, it's where the law department's determining otherwise.
Yeah, it's similar to what we do with marijuana uses. You know, it's just a pause on issuing permits and conditional zoning certificates, that kind of thing, while we have the opportunity to research the code and see what kind of regulations you guys wanna put in place, if any.
Yeah, I'm not a coffee drinker. But how many Dunkin' Donuts are there within a three-mile radius?
That's the reaction I anticipate, is if we pass this, the uproar on that social media reference is gonna be, why just this, right?
Well, to be clear, there's another coffee shop that wants to come right now, so... It's not, it's not a Dunkin' Donuts.
Unfortunately, the mother, the mom one that was run is gone. And they were excellent, but nobody knew existed.
I talk about that a lot, when people talk about the mom pops and they don't want the, you know, the corporate-type entities. But you see what happens with the mom pops is they don't survive, unfortunately.
Yeah.
You can't get into the Dunkin' in our town hardly at all, the first thing in the morning or the last thing in the evening.
Well, just drive down the...
So do you guys, you guys wanna leave this on one read this week? You can talk more to Mark about it, or you guys wanna do one, two, three and that this is a beginning of a conversation?
Do we should do your pending?
I'd do one, two, three.
I'd like to see one, two, three, so nobody can slip in before this gets done.
There are rumors of more coming.
Mr. Finley, do you have an opinion? It would just be, you know, for the, to the vote. And this would be a 12-month moratorium.
Yeah, I'm just not a fan of it being an emergency.
Right, yeah. Well, let's do one reading this week. Sounds like some people, Mr. Finley and Mr. Garvis, wanna do a little more research to back up their own votes. And then we'll swing back around to the second reading in May. Alright, and then 54, more disposal of vehicles. Anything that has to add on this chief?
This, when we finally get our vehicles up and up, this is getting rid of the rest of the fleet. We just thought we'd get it done that way as each car gets turned over. Like right now, we have one up here. We get that one back, we're gonna put those other ones on, dump deals, get them on, so they're not stacking up in the parking lot, so...
Excellent, thank you. Alright, any other questions or issues?
Did you tonight, again, mayor, talk about what's going in next to Burlington? We thought the, this, no, maybe that, no, this. And the residents, I have a couple of questions to, I need a chick to look. And they love to be asked.
One, two, three on that one?
I'm out of touch, because they said this one, then this one. They were hoping it wasn't gonna be more exposed.
I just wanna make sure you guys are all on board.
I know.
The one, the one that baffles me is, they're supposed to be a porch one, which is Sephora, which is also inside coals.
Yeah, they redid the entire, took out the jewelry section of coals.
I don't, I don't get, I don't get that.
As long as you see your next apartment, it's all wood, you see, or it's...
I have a friend who...
Somebody took out?
Hello and welcome to the April 27th council meeting. It is 7:34. Mr. Hoover, please call the roll.
Ms. Brant?
Here.
Mr. Finley?
Here.
Mr. Garvis?
Here.
Ms. Tully?
Here.
Mr. Ventura?
Here.
Now I ask Mr. O'Brien to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and the invocation.
With bowheads, let us pray. Almighty God, we pray that you give guidance to our elected officials so that they may work in a harmonious and honest manner. Grant them the courage to collaborate for the common good of our community and to provide us with the services we need. We ask you, Almighty God, to watch over our police and fire personnel, for they are our first responders to crises that may arise at any time, day or night. Please keep them safe, so at the end of their workday, they can return unharmed to their homes and loved ones. And further, we ask you keep a watchful eye over all our city employees. Those civil servants who work is done for the benefit of our community. In closing, O God of mercy, we ask for thy blessing and comfort for our neighbors who may be suffering from mental or physical disabilities. Cheer them and bring them thy blessing of health and happiness. Amen? Now with hand over heart, please join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I apologize for not wearing a suit today. I didn't have a chance to go home and introduce the chief, so I apologize. Alright, hold your right hand, please. Good afternoon. I, Aaron Cullen?
I, Aaron Cullen?
Do solemnly swear and affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I shall uphold and support?
That I shall uphold and support.
In word and spirit?
In word and spirit.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio?
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
All laws of federal and state?
All laws of federal and state.
The charter ordinances and resolutions?
The charter ordinances and resolutions.
Of the city of Macedonia?
Of the city of Macedonia.
And that I shall faithfully?
That I shall faithfully?
Honestly and impartially?
Honestly and impartially.
Discharge my duties as police lieutenant?
Discharge my duties as police lieutenant.
During my term of office, as I shall answer to God?
During my term of office, and I shall answer to God.
Nice try.
Introduce your family and friends.
This is my wife, Jolene, on the end with my oldest grandson and my daughter-in-law, Nikki. Jordan, my son. My daughter, Carly, and her boyfriend, Landon. And then my other grandson, Walker. And then the officers that have come here to support tonight. Thank you very much for being here.
Congratulations, Senator.
I, Brian Glatz?
I, Brian Glatz.
Do solemnly swear and affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I shall uphold and support?
That I shall uphold and support.
In word and spirit?
In word and spirit.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio?
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
All laws of federal and state?
All laws of federal and state.
The charter ordinances and resolutions?
The charter ordinances and resolutions.
Of the city of Macedonia?
Of the city of Macedonia.
And that I shall faithfully?
And I shall faithfully.
Honestly and impartially?
Honestly and impartially.
Discharge my duties as police lieutenant?
Discharge my duties as police lieutenant.
During my term of office, as I shall answer to God?
During my term of office, as I shall answer to God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So my family, a lot of them came out. Cherie, my wife, Carmen's son, Evan's son, Sam, Carmen's girlfriend. My sister, Stacy, Jacob, Jonathan, Carrie, they're all her kids. Caitlin, also her kid. Greg, and the little one is her husband and child. My in-laws, Mike and Adele, my father.
I'm gonna tell him he's not related to Colin.
And then my neighbors back there, we can't forget about them, Jason and Ally. And then all my officers and dispatchers, along with chief.
Chief, anything you wanna add?
I know. Now, I don't know if I can. Mike was a career police officer as well. Brian is following his footsteps and I'm sure, you know, I don't know. This is emotional for me, because we made a lot of different changes and moving in a new direction. But I really look forward to working with Lieutenant Collins and Lieutenant Collins. They're both very capable. And they're gonna be part of our team. It's gonna be a great team and we're gonna keep moving forward. Congratulations to both of you.
Well, chief, anything you wanna add? I barely recognize you.
I got a job for you in December.
I wanna thank everybody for coming. It's pretty awesome that we have some changes coming to the police department. I think it's very exciting. I know we talked a lot about when Chief Yakapowicz took over, we were gonna make some rapid changes to the staff. I think you guys are seeing it. It's exciting, there's a lot of opportunity in the future. So I'm happy to see where we're headed and looking forward to all the changes we have make, we've made. And we got some more promotions coming, so that's exciting too, so...
I'm gonna step out, take a few pictures, I'll be right back in, okay?
And you guys don't have to stay unless you really want to. It's really exciting in here. If you wanna go, you're welcome to.
Sorry, Collins.
So we all get to go?
No, sorry.
No.
All I heard was you guys, I mean, you know.
If you are elected or employed, no.
Mr. Collins, return to your...
For as many people, they're kinda quiet. Or is that my allergies, because I can't hear today?
Chief Zalinski?
Just wait till the kicks, the noise from there. Oh, yeah.
We're good.
It's bad.
Just wanted you to close the doors, that's all.
Are they gonna hang out there?
I think we're good, I think they're going back.
She would've done it.
Alright, moving on to approval of minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the Thursday, April 13th, 2023 regular council meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public comments? We have none today. And we'll move right into pending of new legislation, starting with ordinance number 50.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 50, 2023, for its second reading by title only.
Second.
An ordinance providing for submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia, proposed amendment to Section 11.01 of the Charter Regarding the Composition of the Board of Zoning and Building Code Appeals.
Ordinance number 51.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 51, 2023, for its second reading by title only.
An ordinance providing for submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia, proposed amendment to Article 13 of the Charter Regarding Parks and Recreation.
Ordinance number 52.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 52, 2023, for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance authorizing participation in the Houston-Gallston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program and authorizing the purchase of a new AMR-60 automated rotary mower from M-Tech for use by the service department.
So essentially, this piece of legislation is proposing an autonomous mower for Longwood Park. We're having a lot of trouble finding seasonal employees. I think that's pretty consistent throughout, everywhere in our country. So we are looking for other options to try and get the work done. We have a lot of skilled workers in the service department and we have a lot of skilled work, God bless you. We have a lot of skilled work that needs to be performed, that we are falling behind on. Cutting grass is not skilled work. So this is something that we're bringing to council to see if they'll support us on so that we can put the mower to work and it's, it's safe. We'll have more to come on that. We have a video playing that I'm sure we'll put up on our website. But essentially, the individual that'll go out with it could do the weed whipping while the mower did the bulk of the cutting of grass. And/or if the individual's out on the ball fields, preparing them for baseball or softball that day, the mower can go cut the grass while they're performing those tasks. So we feel it's something that's prudent and good for the department. It'll save us a lot of time. And given the fact that we have so much work to do and falling behind on, and we don't have enough employees to cut the grass, we think that this is the best option moving forward. So we are on first read tonight, there'll be more to come regarding this. Any further conversation?
Is there a sound on this video?
There is not.
Okay. You might as well watch.
You would just hear a mower sound. It is, it is not an electric mower, by the way. It is a gas-powered Kawasaki. Mr. Wilson?
Oh, there is a sound. Had it.
Heavy metal. Because when you cut grass, it's heavy metal, right?
Handout's low.
Mr. Wilson, anything I missed?
I think you covered it.
I'm feeling loquacious today. I'm sorry. I stole your thunder.
Loquacious.
All right.
The cost, in case the residents were wondering, the cost of this mower with delivery is about $66,000.
From a procedural standpoint, this legislation first authorizes the city to become a member of this governmental cooperative purchasing program, which is actually out of Texas, but it's a national program. And therefore does not have to go to business at least over the threshold.
Where would this be delivered from? Is this a local or national?
Yeah, their headquarters is, it's in northeast Ohio.
Oh, okay.
I came out of Oakwood, and they're right in Oakwood.
Oh, fantastic.
We're purchasing our truck through there.
They're a good, recognized company that we've done business with before, and they highly recommended this product. So it's something that's very interesting to us.
And you saw a demonstration of it?
We, not that, well, yeah, it went out, but they had a, there's another autonomous mower, but it's more remote control for doing hills and things like that. But we watched more of the video, and they put the mower out. So it was more of the video than actually in action. But they did play the video for us a couple times and gave us all the details that go around it. Just to be clear, if someone's walking in front of it, or a ball bounces in front of it, and it detects anything, the mower will stop and shut down.
And the city plans to have someone on site whenever this is deployed?
The idea would be, again, to have an individual go out with a weed whip or working on the ball field so that they're in the proximity of the mower while it's operating. And then they can do the other work while keeping an eye on that going and doing its job.
And also, doesn't the machine, the machine stops when someone approaches it? So no one could hop on it and continue on to their house with it, correct?
Correct. It will stop. I think it's in the video here at some point where somebody walks in front of it, and it comes to a complete stop. It has a proximity sensor around it, so I think, I don't remember what the number of feet is around it, but it was reasonable. I think it was about 10 feet, wasn't it?
Right. Kyle's searching for it.
It's pretty sensitive. If a ball bounces in front of it, it stops. Pretty neat. Well, you know, and again, it's something we need, we feel we need. And we got a lot of grass to cut at that park, and we want that park to look good, and this will be a help to that, so.
Maybe we should also invest in a mannequin.
All right, moving on to ordinance number 53.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 53 for its first reading only by title only.
An emergency ordinance establishing a moratorium for a period of 12 months on applications for and the granting of permits or other authorizations relating to car wash establishments within the city of Macedonia.
So I had read an article about a moratorium of car washes in another community. President Brand also sent me one. I had already had this in the works to get it moving, but I'm glad you were seeing the same things I was because it kinda sparked this conversation. I do hear, I do see a lot of the things out there on social media with people talking about a lot of other types of businesses. I have the law department looking into that. But we're gonna start with the car wash moratorium. We are a 10-square-mile town, 9.73 to be exact, and we have four car washes. I guess the question becomes, at what point do you have too many car washes? Or what point is a certain type of business not necessary? And is there proximity rules that we should put into place? I'm a big fan of this being America, and if you own a piece of property and you're within zoning, you can do whatever you want. But at what point do we start to say enough's enough? Because I think the competition is always good. But at what point is the market saturated in our community? So this is opening up a conversation with council to determine, starting with the car washes, this may be more than that. But I want to start to have the conversation to say, do we have too many car washes? Do we want to leave it alone? Or do we want to take action? So this is the beginning of that. Any further discussion? Okay, resolution number 54.
I move to offer resolution number 54, 2023, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution authorizing the disposition of certain municipal property by the city of Macedonia Police Department in accordance with City of Macedonia codified ordinance section 121.05 and Ohio Revised Code section 721.15.
Chief? This is the disposition of your.
I'm sorry, I was daydreaming.
I'm with you.
So basically, when we finally get our fleet turned over, this will be to get rid of the current fleet. And we wanted to pass them all tonight because we have vehicles out to be outfitted right now. As we get them outfitted, we can put them on gov deals when we get the old one back that's been stripped. Put them on gov deals, get them gone. That way, we're not piling them up in the parking lot. Space is kind of at a premium. We have construction in the back. We have no place to put vehicles as it is. So we thought this would be a good idea. As we get them out of service, just get them, get rid of them, put them on gov deals.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt resolution number 54, 2023, impose the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 54 carries. Are there any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, I'll go into the mayor's report. The chief just alluded to, we have some construction going on here at city hall. On the backside, we've had some bad drainage for many, many years, and we're working to correct that now. I'm sure engineering will touch on that in his report, but I just wanted to let everyone know that it's not an area we want people traveling back there anyway because it's more for police and fire and emergency services. But just know if you see construction going on, we're repairing the things that have been defunct for quite some time. Mrs. Tully had asked me to remind people what is going on at the Burlington location with the open areas, the businesses that are going in there. They are coming. This is what's happening. Don't listen to your aunt, what she told your sister on Tuesday at Finest or whatever market you go to. We are getting, I know, that's what my mind's at.
Pick and pay.
Pick and pay. Piggly wiggly.
What era are you in?
It's been a long day. But we are, the Burlington has moved over. We are getting a Nordstrom Rack. We are getting a Sephora. We are getting a TJ Maxx. I know that there's a Sephora in Coles. I don't know if they're eliminating that Sephora, or if they're gonna keep it and have this other one. I don't know. Here again, I talk about this all the time. If you're within zoning and you own the property, you could do whatever you want. So that's, this is all part of America and being able to do what you want with your property. So that's all good stuff. I've heard a lot of good things about most of those businesses. So I think, I know my wife's gonna be very happy with those. I don't want her to go there because she'll spend a lot of money. But hey, it's something that makes her happy. I'm in.
She'll get the max for the minimum.
Sure.
Max.
Sure. So that's coming here. I don't know if dates or timelines. With every construction we're having in time, people always ask me too about, when's the Panda Express gonna open? They don't even know. I mean, a lot of this has to do with labor and materials and all the stuff that's delaying everything in the world. I think it's improving. It's still not where it needs to be. We're not pre-pandemic where we kinda can gauge where we're at. So more to come on all that. And last but not least, put the phones down, drive the car. Your phone is not important when you're driving a car. And I'm gonna add one thing today. When you're driving and you're going to a turning lane or you're coming to a stoplight, don't stop 10 cars back to look at your phone. Pull up so you can have traffic be appropriate. There's a lot of sensors in the road that can help you to turn. Looking at your phone is really not that important. There's no text message that important. So please concentrate on the road when you're driving. Okay, committee reports.
Parks and Rec Commission had their, our April meeting last Wednesday. We talked a lot about, we had talked about new projects that we had been interested in. And within a month, the Parks and Rec staff was able to kinda get an idea of costs of many of those projects. So that was very interesting for us to go through. And we also went over, you know, all the work that they're doing in the parks now that it's spring and they're able to get out there with the weather, the excellent registration numbers for our spring soccer, which is great. And just all the, once again, all the great things coming out of the Parks and Rec department. And our next meeting will be Wednesday, May 17th, at 6 o'clock, probably upstairs. Yes, upstairs in the conference room up there. The end of my report.
I have a real brief report for the Charter Review Commission. First two items on today's agenda were from the Charter Review Commission. We've concluded almost everything that we were gonna consider. We did technically adjourn as a commission, but we're gonna hold off on adjourning at the council level just in case there's a need to restart the commission for anything. But I wanted to take tonight's opportunity to thank the members, starting with Mr. Vinnie Milliotta, who's here today and the audience is usually here in the audience. Sometimes you're the only audience. Linda Byber, Paul Bender, Tom Darmeyer, Julie Nicholson, and Luis Gonzalez. Each of those are residents of the city. They were all nominated by those of us up here. And they came to the council chambers and caucus room and spent somewhere in the neighborhood of seven nights, maybe? Minimum of an hour every time we were here, I think. And put a lot of work into looking at the charter and helping us come up with suggestions and reviewing things. And I personally credit that organization of people with finding some flaws that existed in the charter that this council and the voters have passed, that the codifier never actually properly put into the documents. And I think we only discovered that because the group sat down and said, wait a minute, why do we treat the police department like this and the fire department like this? And it turned out it was, we don't, they just didn't properly update the charter after it was passed by the voters. So thank you to all those people, and that's it, Mayor.
Thank you.
The cemetery board will hold their meeting Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, 3:30. And then the annual meeting here in city hall, they'd like to schedule for May 25th at 7:15 before the council meeting. That's the one where all the communities come together. They've always presented it here. And we then vote. Every community votes on the budget and other things. So you could put that down, please.
May 27?
May.
Oh, you're right.
May 25th.
Yeah.
7:15.
Any other committee reports? Okay, department reports. Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. It's spring, we're doing a lot of mowing, obviously. We talked about that. We've done a lot of soil and seed touch-up work throughout the city. We're completing it. We're about done with it. And we've done a lot here at city hall. Take a look at that. You guys did a great job. We're working in the rec. We're doing a lot of repairs in the rec center. Just, you know, today I was, I was by there, saw some guys were fixing some drywall that's kicked in or leant in or whatever. And we're doing some work in the break room. So there's a lot of skilled labor going on there. Same thing, we're working on these bathrooms. I think we have a timeline of like two more weeks in these bathrooms. So we actually see the light at the end of the tunnel. And like I said, it's spring. We're ditching, is really picking up ditching and culvert work and that kind of thing. So we are heading into that season. Joe and I have been out looking at a lot of water issues. It's just that time of year, so. End of report.
Thank you. Director Gelati?
Thanks, Mayor. As most of you know, our parking lot here at the city hall for the emergency services is under construction. Crew's made a lot of good progress to this point. It's a bit of an inconvenience for police and fire. The chief's been cooperative so far, so thank you for that.
It's probably gonna change, Joe.
So. And a little luck from the weather, we'll be done before you know it. With that, I think Jason's gonna tell us some good news about.
I have a question for Joe and Dan. Last year, we worked on an address 14, I believe it was 1416 Bradford, the corner of Bradford and Blueberry. And I believe the resident was finally told that there would be some relief sometime this season on the water being able to flow away from his property since he's at the top of the, you know, he's on the westernmost part of the street, and it's supposed to be flowing eastbound. I just don't want to let that fall between the cracks. You guys have been very generous about spending time over there every time I ask to take another look at that and see what needs to be done. And I like, again, I just want to make sure it doesn't fall between the cracks for Mr. Vasquez.
Yes. Thank you for the reminder. I do remember that. I believe Joe looked at it. I think we came up with a solution.
Yep, we do, and I know Steve has it on his agenda.
Yeah, it's on the agenda. But thank you for the reminder. I will, it reminds me to double check with Steve, make sure it's in the works.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Hold my up now?
I think it's your turn to start it.
Thank you. Couple quick updates, then I'll get to the good news. We are starting on May 1st with a new contract with Butler Fitness. Butler Fitness is a personal training company that will come into our rec center, and they're going to be able to offer all sorts of different personal training packages for guests of our facility. And they actually have it advertised already on our website and on social media. So we're really excited to bring that back into the rec center. And they will also do some fitness assessments for people as well as some equipment orientations for us. So it's really exciting to kinda get that back up and going again. Again, May 1st, they'll be physically in the building. And the work Director Wilson was just talking about taking place in the old top room area is actually their more private area to set up for fitness. And they have the office area there as well. So thanks to the service team for being out and doing a ton of work in the facility over the last couple of weeks. It's been great to have them there. And with that, I'd like to highlight some of the great trades work that goes on in the rec center. We've had a couple of service workers over there finishing some cabinetry work upstairs in the break room area. And we recently had countertops installed there, as well as the bathrooms behind the front desk just got brand-new countertops. So it's been really good to get those things done. So we have replaced 23-year-old cabinets and countertops, and they look beautiful now. Cindy Funk did a great job of designing that layout. I told her she's not allowed to leave yet to become an interior designer, though. We need her for a couple more years. So anyway, it's been great to get those projects done. And then a quick update for council. Thanks for approving the multipurpose field work to be done. Wanted to let you guys know that work will start next month. As far as that Longwood Park, we're excited to get those fields put in with the intent to start using them in 2024 spring season for soccer. Now I'll get to the fun stuff. So the NRPA is the National Recreation and Parks Association. That is like the big governing body throughout the country within the Parks and Recreation field. The AARPA is the American Academy for Recreation and Parks Administration. And these are two huge governing bodies for our field. And one of the exciting things they do is they have what is called an NRPA Gold Medal Award. And that is literally to recognize the best of the best in the field. And we decided to throw in an application for that. This happened back in like February. And we decided we were gonna take six weeks to work on this process. What you go through is 10 questions that they ask you to explain the operations that you have and how you serve the community. You write a master plan, a strategic plan, and then you have to do an executive summary of each of those plans and submit all of this for review. And there's a panel of five professionals from throughout the country that evaluate these and take a look at things and see where you guys fit amongst your peers like throughout the entire country. So it's a really exciting thing. And I'm really happy to announce that we won. We were selected as a finalist. So in this field, it's really interesting because we are a Gold Medal Award finalist, which means we actually won. So we've been invited to Dallas, Texas for the NRPA conference that'll take place in October to be awarded the plaque for that. So the other interesting piece to that is now there's four people that get selected in each classification. We are in class five. So if you look on the screen, you can actually see where we are listed. Class five is population of 30,000 or less. That's where we qualify. So it's really neat to see we're a population of about 12,000 people competing against these other bigger cities. So the really neat thing is we're a finalist winner. We're one of four agencies that get selected in that class. So we're all winners. All of those cities are invited. And then what happens is now you have the best of the best competition that goes on, and that is to win the grand plaque. competition that goes on, and that is to win the grand plaque, and that is like the best of the best. You win it for that particular year. I wanted to highlight, though, something really intriguing to this is the award demonstrates excellence in long-range planning, resource management, and innovative approaches to delivering superb park and recreation services with fiscally sound business practices. So you literally spend all your time building your business to this, and I thought it was really fitting, because one of the things we did when I first got here was we came up with what is our vision for this department, and it was excellence in service, excellence in community, sustainability, and service. And it's really intriguing how that fits right to what they're doing there. So now we have the interesting task of putting together a video. So we have a five-minute video presentation that we will do to submit on behalf of our city that then goes with the other three entities, and that becomes what the judges go through, final review to see who the grand plaque winner is. I wanted to tell you guys a really interesting thing that we learned. This award started being given in 1966. There's only one city north of Columbus that has won this, won the grand plaque, and that was the city of Brooklyn back in 1990. So, so nobody else in all that time. So it's been 33 years since someone north of Columbus won the grand plaque. So we're excited for the opportunity to compete for that, and obviously, it's a big deal. We're really excited. National recognition for the city, so it's huge for us, and now we look forward to seeing like what we do, put it together. We've teamed up with Community Focus. Mary Kidd's going to come in and help us put together the video that we submit, which will be due May 25th, and we hope in June we'll find out where we end up in the grand plaque scheme of things.
So what you're telling me is Macedonia Parks and Recreation is the top four in the country?
Correct.
That's amazing. Thank you.
Yep. I'm done, JB. No report.
So Jason, I just want to give you some feedback on your excellent marketing skills. I made the trip.
I have no marketing skills.
Your department, then.
Yeah, that's the bad here. I don't like this.
We went up to the rec center tonight to go partake in the food truck.
Oh, great.
We were there 30 minutes after they opened, and half of their whiteboard was wiped out because they had sold out.
Wow.
And by the time, when we got in line, one of your staff members was standing behind us, and he didn't get any food. We took the last order out of the truck. Had no idea we were doing it.
Wow.
So, and the people running that truck said they had no idea how busy they were going to be, and that they haven't sold out that quick at most of the festivals they go to.
That's awesome.
So you may want to give that feedback to the next truck that's coming.
Don't love.
That's what they had to do with the beer fest. They didn't realize that Macedonia was so thirsty.
I think the signs did a really good job, and you had massive turnout up there.
That's awesome. Thanks for that feedback. Appreciate that. I'll let.
They were done by 6:20, and I think they were supposed to be there till 7:30, I think.
Wow. Yeah. Wow. Good stuff.
Yep, thank you.
All right, Chief Ripley. I'm kidding. Director Varis.
No report, Mayor.
No report.
Rita Tax. I'm wiped out today. No report.
Chief Ripley. Tan guy.
Would you like me to give you a report?
Yes, please.
You're, Rita, income tax returns. As, as Director Gilati said, the construction here is immense. Engineering has done a really good job so far, and I would like to caution people, there's vehicles exiting this area in areas you're not used to seeing them. So if you're walking or driving in our front parking lot, there's going to be fire apparatus that very seldom go through that way. Better be coming through there. There's going to be cruisers. Please be, please be very cautious in that area. Jason, I believe there's a council meeting that week, so you won't be able to make Dallas, so. And the Hydrant Cruiser out working, they've already got about 2/3 of Macedonia done. So they are moving very quickly with very little problems, knock on wood, okay? Very successful. And I would like to caution everyone with the summer months and kids and bicycles and driving. I don't like when we get dispatched to those types of incidents, so please be very cautious. Kids are walking to school, they're riding bikes to school. Please be cautious. Thank you.
Chief Yakapovich.
Well, first, I want to, again, congratulate Lieutenant Clowland and Lieutenant Glance on their promotions. Looking forward to the changes. And also, Ms. Brandt, we touched base this week, and she asked me to speak a little bit about some common sense tips on dealing with being pulled over, specifically around northeast Ohio. You've seen in the news lately, people impersonating police officers, okay? So bottom line is, most traffic stops, the vast majority are going to be in marked police cars. It's going to be a fully marked police car, police on the side, distinct colors, distinct light bar, push bar, I mean, easily identifiable. The officer's going to be in full uniform. The, the issues with unmarked cars or semi-marked cars is where the concern begins, okay? The unmarked cars or semi-marked cars will very, very rarely be making a traffic stop. So the first thing you need to ask yourself is, did I just do something blatant or dangerous? If you find yourself, like, I drive a unmarked car. It does have interior lights. You can't tell from the outside until they're turned on. If you find yourself being pulled over by an unmarked car because you just went through a red light, didn't realize it until every car in the intersection's blowing their horn at you, that's probably going to be a legitimate stop. That's something, because a non-fully marked cruiser cannot be dedicated solely, it shouldn't be used primarily for traffic enforcement. So, but if I see something dangerous, I'm going to attempt to stop that vehicle. It's very rare. The only other circumstances here in Macedonia is, let's say, we had a shoplifting call from one of our stores, and a unmarked detective, me or one of the lieutenants are out in our vehicle, we see the vehicle, we're going to attempt to stop it. So one of the biggest things I would say, number one, an unmarked vehicle can attempt to stop you for a traffic violation. It's going to be very, very rare. If it's not someone in uniform, it's okay, number one. Two, it's an unmarked vehicle or semi-marked vehicle at night, I'm going to slow down a little bit, make sure they know I'm yielding. I'm going to look for the lit area, maybe an occupied area where there's people, not very far, because we don't want them thinking, I'm not stopping. During the day, okay, I'm going to pull into this parking lot where I see people coming in and out. Probably good practice. The other thing would be, if they're not in uniform, it's okay to ask them, I need identification. Secondly, if you find yourself in that position where you haven't done anything blatant, haven't done anything dangerous, and you just don't get that vibe, it's okay to call 911. The jurisdiction you're in will get that 911 call, for the most part, absent regional dispatch centers, and that dispatcher will know. Yes, that's my officer. That's my chief. That's my lieutenant. Yes, you're okay. So common sense things, but don't be afraid to call the dispatch center to confirm. I don't know if you've gotten any other questions specifically, Jessica, about that, or?
No, I've just been reading about it in the news and one, so some clarification from the local department, so that was very, very good and informative. Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodick.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of items on the construction projects. We have a bunch of construction right now. Both Chick-fil-A and Taco Bell have completed their minor interior alterations. Taco Bell also completed some exterior alterations as well. The interior improvements at Target are nearly completed, and those include the freezer and the produce area. That should probably be open by next week. Optometorermatology is in the process of completing their exterior site work, which includes the lighted brick pier and black rail fence on the access road and on Rabe to, to match the Chick-fil-A, and eventually Chipotle will have theirs as well. Panda Express is actually anticipating a late May opening, but as the mayor indicated earlier, they plan on being open already, so we'll see how that goes. TJ Maxx is currently making exterior improvements to their exterior entrance. You can see the, the mansard roof going, or the mansard going up, and also the roof structure modifications to promote the proper drainage. Down Bash Jewelers is in the drywall stage, and they are still anticipating a July opening. Cleveland Clinic will be opening their new office on Monday at the McGuire Medical Building, and notable projects we'll have for the planning commission in May will be the Sephora store at Gateway Plaza and Chase Bank as the process of Golden Link. And lastly, there will be no court of appeals meeting in May due to elective agenda. That's all I have.
Thank you. Director Collins.
Thanks, Mayor. 28 help desk tickets. Major projects include procurement of new hardware for the lieutenants' offices in.
We can't hear you, Director Collins.
I think we're having an IT issue.
Can't hear me?
Now we can.
Oh, I'll talk louder. Sorry. 28 help desk tickets. Major projects included procurement of hardware for the fire, or the police department's new lieutenants' offices, as well as some hardware procurement for the fire department, and then some expansion of Wi-Fi at the rec center. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you. Director Gaddetti. Any unfinished business? Any new business?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to just put some information out that I found out today before I, while I was getting ready to come here. On, in May, from May 2nd to May 4th, from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM, ReWorks is having a special recycling days for electronics, televisions, glass bottles, string lights, cooking oils, and other, and campaign signs. If you want to turn in a television, you must make an appointment with them. Let them know that you have a television, that you're bringing it in. ReWorks is right off of Round 8, on the east side of the overpass as you exit Graham Road. You're actually in the Stowe jurisdiction at that time, and maybe we can get that on the website real quick.
It's already there.
Okay. That's not where I found it, but that's great. So that's a special three-day event specifically for major electronics, but they'll be taking those other items also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to personally congratulate Mr. Chaddick and everyone at the Department of Rec that has, you know, the work they did to apply for this award, the work they've done to get to the place where they can win this award. I think it's just absolutely amazing. You know, Jason's only been here for, since August of 2020, and he's filled in with the rest of the staff since then. John, Brad, Sam, Kristen, and Cindy have, you guys are just such an amazing team, and you've done so much for rec over there, and I'm so proud of you guys. Whether or not you get the grand plaque or just make it to the top four in that category is amazing. Just, just thinking how you guys are up against cities with 30,000 people, 20,000 people, and you're making such a difference. So, and I hope the residents really understand what we, we have in you guys and your team, because it is really special. And I also want to congratulate Lieutenant Clowland and Glance, or Glance, for making it to the new lieutenant positions, and we look forward to having them help lead our city, and that's all.
I have a message I got today as a reminder. Tomorrow's a very special day for someone on our Diaz. It's their birthday.
I have one every year.
So happy birthday tomorrow. Have a great weekend.
Thank you. I will. I'm taking the day off work.
Maybe it won't rain.
Wait a minute, tomorrow's your birthday? Well, happy birthday.
Well, thank you. It's not, it's not as good as Mark's birthday.
That birthday's really special, sorry.
Yeah, that was.
Turning 21 is a big deal.
Any other new business? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Same.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.